Let me get this going here.
If I can find my paper on my additional.
So if I could please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Forgot my introduction on today's date is June the 2nd, 2025, and this is the Talcity Common Council. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Connie, you had one adoption of your new business, E.
Yes, and it would be amendment to the salary ordinance.
Amendment to the salary ordinance. Okay, council, was there any other additions or changes?
Motion to approve with revision.
All right, we have motion made by Gerald, their second. Second by Brian. All those in favor, second if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda stands approved. Next is presentation of minutes for your approval. Council should have your May the 5th and your May 19th minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Larry, is there a second? Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, second if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes stand approved. Next is your approval of accounts payable vouchers. So this is something that Connie's been working on, so Connie, I'll let you, or I'll turn that part over to you.
I did, I forgot to bring the claim, the accounts payable vouchers up for them to sign. So if they would have go ahead and approve them, and then if a couple of council members can stop in my office and sign them sometime this week, I'd appreciate that. So.
That's something new Connie's wanted to add onto the agenda.
And I apologize for not bringing them up, and my girls didn't remind me either today.
I didn't think about it either.
I didn't, I just didn't think about it.
I don't think you've ever not brought that folder with you.
I know, I know, so.
I don't know if there've been any new ones since Friday, but I signed them Friday.
There might have been a few on claims that, checks that were written today. Is there, where there would have been a few extras.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is a motion made by Larry, second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, second if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is comments of citizens. If there are any citizens who'd like to make any comments, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please.
Name's Ron LaFord, 12th Street, Talcity. Now, I don't want to make it sound like I'm complaining and complaining, but I'm glad to see he's still here. But on these alleys that we're wanting to pave, I was just kind of curious. I mean, do the grants not cover that, or?
Yeah, that's what I was saying in the last meeting, that you cannot get grants to pay community crossings, which is where we get our grants for paving the streets.
Oh, okay.
They do not cover alleys.
They do not.
There's been, there's been a few what you would call alleys that may have been paved with it, but they were the only access to those people's homes, which a good example would be 10th Street East and 10th Street West, which if you, it's kind of where it go, it's going south, where there is a large hill there, the alley, part of the street's there, then it becomes the alleys. Those, and there may have been one other, I think, but no, it's.
No, I know, we, we can't, you know, change any of those rules or laws tonight or anything like that. But I was just kind of curious, how many people have seen the alleys? I mean, they're going to vote on it. Have you seen the alleys?
Well, I drive them.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You, you drive all of them?
Yes, I do.
So you have seen them?
The ones that, on the list.
Has everybody seen the alleys that they're going to vote on?
I drove all three of them yesterday.
You drove, okay. Has he? You haven't?
No.
Okay. Then I don't know if Phillip, does, is he not going to be here tonight?
He's not here.
Okay, I mean, does he drive them? So I, I.
You have to ask him.
My concern is people voting on things that they don't know what's going on, which I don't want to stand here and try to say that what you're doing or what you want, that I'm, I'm against it. I'm not against it. I'm just trying to find out, you know, we're always talking about, you know, making things affordable, and right now, I mean, everybody wants something affordable because of the groceries and everything else. You know, I mean, is it possible to even save that money? I mean, is it, are you allowed to save that money, or do you lose it?
No, I mean, the money is there to be used in the general fund for that, for any purposes.
So you can carry it from year to year?
It's a matter, matter of prioritizing what you're going to spend.
And I'm not saying they don't need done. I, I haven't seen them. I honestly have not seen them. My big concern is people that don't, that don't know what they're voting for, or they're voting for them, you know, voting to spend, you know, taxpayers' money. Now, basically, if you say they need it, I would, I would respect that, you know? I mean, I would have a respect for that. But that's, that's really, you know, I mean, just, you know, we're talking about affordable housing and this and that, you know? I mean, it's just, I was just trying to find out what, what else, how can we save that money? And then, you know, put it someplace else or something, you know? But I'm pretty much.
Chris, that's why we're, you know, trying to keep it in our realm of it, by doing a couple of them at a time.
And while we're, while we're on it, Ron, I might mention that alley.
And I, I know there are some.
Alley, yeah. Out, uh, in the 1300 block on 21st Street. That's, that's the alley between 20th and 21st, is correct? There are, I didn't count them, but I know there are at least four houses, if not more than that, that have, that's a dead end street, 21st Street is. 20th Street you can get through, but 21st Street. Anyway, there are at least four houses on that alley that have garages, and that's the only access they have to those garages, that alley. That alley is terrible. It is terrible.
Oh, I know there's some potholes there in Hamilton. I'm kind of worried if I'm going to have to replace a rim, you know?
And, and let me clarify something else, too. The mayor said, and rightfully so, the city and the county both have done a great job going after these community crossings grants. But that money doesn't appear from heaven. Those are state taxes.
Taxes are taxes still.
Taxes are taxes.
Okay, taxes are our money, it's our money. And that's why I'm asking a question for my money, or my part of the money anyways, like that.
If you pay gasoline tax, then you're paying for some of the paving.
Trust me, I pay a bunch of it at that. I was just, my main concern, do we have people voting on something that they don't know about? But if he voted on it, I, I guess I'd have to say I have the respect for him, because I mean, he has to run his trucks up and down there, and he would know about it, you know? So I mean, I would respect his vote, but if you haven't seen it, and you haven't seen it, you know, please don't vote.
Just about every, every month, Chris mentions that somebody has called and said, when are you going to get the, so I'm aware of the problem. We're not allowed to pave alleys, though. I, I know the street department has been filling the worst potholes with, you know, my alley with gravel, trying to make do until we get a chance to. I'm aware of the problem, I don't know the specific alley that you're talking about.
No, just, I didn't know if we could save that money or something like that, you know, just do one alley or two alleys or something, you know? I mean, you know, try to, try, I understand you're making this place purty. You, you're painting the town purty, but, you know, painting it affordable, you know? I mean, that's going to help people come here, too, as well, you know? I'm not a sports fan by no means, but what you're going, doing down there, I mean, it's, it's awesome. It, it really is. I mean, I respect, you know.
I'm not a sports person, I can barely see how many innings there are in a game.
I don't know, I, I watch one game a year, and that's it, and the Super Bowl, and that's it, you know? But thank you for letting me talk.
Well, no, we appreciate you taking the time.
Out of curiosity, I just wanted to find out who is actually voting for something they don't know nothing about.
Also, Ron, we've been considering setting a time limit on speakers.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you're accomplishing what I was hoping for. Organized, you have what you want to say, and you say it.
Well, I don't want to take up your time or anything else, huh?
Yeah, I know.
Personally, I'm a very busy man, I think about walking out there, that, but.
Well, I will say I noticed your house first, so I'm sorry to see you moving, hopefully not, are you moving out?
I'm going to Hamilton, I got some bikes in Lamar, I got a contractor, throwing some pricing and everything.
Well, I hate to see that.
I'm building a house in Lamar.
Sure.
Thank you, Ron.
I want to say thank you for acknowledging me having my hand up back here.
I appreciate you.
When he was trying to ignore me.
I was not. I've never ignored you, you know that. I have to, I'm on a track mine, I'll get to you, but I just got to get.
I, I kept trying to circle back to Ron.
We ain't going to ignore you.
All right.
Thanks, Ron.
Any other comments of citizens? So we'll move on to committee and ward reports. We'll start first with Ward 1, Larry Kleeman, and if you want your partners in pride at the same time, it's fine.
I will, I'll play that for the last. I've got a fairly long report tonight, Mayor, but I may be able to shorten some of it. On May the 13th, I watched the newest Habitat House moved by crane into place at the lot of 9th and Gutenberg Streets. So that, that house was built by students at Perry Central, and once they build it, they, I guess they built it in two halves, and they trucked the halves down to the lot and used a crane to set the two halves in place. And if you drive by that corner up there, you'll see that house is now beginning to, they're doing the completion of that house. I'm not sure exactly when it will be ready for occupancy, but it was, it was really exciting to see that. There was a good crowd there, and that's a great project for Perry Central. That's the second house that they built. The other one was located on 10th Street in the 500 block. It was amazing to watch that crane operator. I mean, he, he operated that with precision, and it was, it was, it was good to see it. And I appreciate the work that Habitat has done to, that's four new homes that Habitat has built in my ward since I've been on the council. And that's probably in that area on 9th and 10th Street. There's probably haven't been many new homes built.
That's the first time any new homes probably been in that area since the 50s, if you want to know the truth.
Yeah. So anyway, it was, it was good to see that.
Yeah.
And witness that. On May the 16th, I participated in a three and a half hour webinar that was provided by AIM. The first hour of that was on legislative issues. The last two and a half hours of it was on budgeting issues. And I, I've got, I don't know, five or six pages of notes, and I'm not going to go through them in detail, but I do want to highlight a few things. The, one of the biggest things they talked about on legislative issues is Senate Bill 1, which was 377 pages of legislation dealing with the, the budget.
Think they ran it, Ron? Think they read that, Rod, Ron? Think they read that bill, 300 something pages, how many, and they voted on it without reading that?
But there is some.
I bet a bunch of them did.
There's some significant changes in the legislation which are going to affect us. Some this coming year, more in 2027 and 2028. They put a cap on the growth of the net assessed value, Connie, at 4%. They arbitrarily put a 4% cap on it. If they would have used the same formula that they've used previously, it would have grown by 5.5%. So they arbitrarily reduced the allowable growth by a percent and a half. Now, it doesn't sound like much, but it could be significant.
Wow, that's huge.
They made significant changes in the local option income tax, doing away with the edit tax, starting in 2028, I believe. Doing away with the edit tax entirely. Separating the local option income tax where the, the county will have their own local option income tax if they decide to pass one, which they have one now. Municipalities of 3,500 or more have the option to adopt their own local income tax, maximum of 1.2%. And then municipalities will no longer, of 3,500 or more. So in Perry County, we've got Hamilton and Troy that will not have the option to adopt their own local tax, income tax. So the county can adopt as part of their rate, their maximum rate is 1.7%. They can adopt or share part of that money with Hamilton and Troy, if they choose to do that. Talcity will have the option to adopt its own tax and will no longer participate in the counties because of the population factor, unless that changes between now and then. But 2028 will be here before you know it. The, then on the house side, oh, excuse me, and road funding, one bit of good news, I guess good news. On road funding is for communities that have population, on the community crossings grant, for communities that have populations under 10,000, the match rate is reduced to 20% versus the current 25%. So we'll have to provide less matching. I'm not sure, I don't know if that kicks in next year. And they're only going with one round of funding, too.
Yeah, maybe. There, I, it's my understanding that they still may open something later, typically in July is when they may, September, October, May. That's just, I miss hearing about it, but those things you're talking about are going to be part of that next application, either this year or next year.
Yeah.
Most of it is. Maybe not the wheel tax thing.
Okay, the, the House and Road Act 1001 was the state budget on the house side. That did a number of things. It reduced all local health departments, including Perry County, by 60%. Across the board, 60% reduction of all county health departments on their funding. I know this effect, and I have a son that works at the Vanderburg County Health Department, so I know this is having an immediate effect. That goes into effect with their new budget starting January 1st, I believe. There are no ready funds appropriated. There's still discussion actually as to whether they're going to, they haven't, my understanding is they haven't made a final decision whether they're going to in fact release the Ready 2 funds. And I know Perry County has a number of projects that have applied for Ready 2 funds. Those funds still haven't been released at this point. They also then, across the board at the state level, cut all budgets by 5%. They made some changes in the Indiana Economic Development Council. The House and Road Act 1633 authorizes a study commission for the General Assembly to appoint for Secretary of State Diego Morales to conduct a study to see what the cost savings would be if they moved municipal elections to the presidential election cycle. So there was a bill introduced to do that, but they ended up authorizing a study. So we'll see how that turns out.
Larry, real quick, can I interject something?
Yeah.
SB 1, you know, Connie and I have had some discussions about hiring somebody like Baker Tilly to help us see what maybe the effects might be on us, so we have, so we're not just totally shooting in the dark, but maybe they could also shed some light on some recommendations, what we may or may not need to do, and kind of some timeframes that we may have to do it by. So, I mean, we got a cost today, which I, I responded back late, I don't know if you've even seen it, that.
You responded back, and I tell you, Chris, I have not had time to review it yet.
Yeah, so we just got that, like, was it today it came?
It was either today or Friday.
Yeah, and so I just saw it today, so.
Yeah.
But anyway, so we're, we're doing a little behind the scenes to help the council when it comes to budget.
And I think that may be a wise investment of funds, because some of these are going to hit us as we prepare our budget for next year, which.
Hundreds of thousands on this $5,000.
It is.
Like 300.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we'll figure it out.
Oh, Jeff, I would ask, House and Road Act 1134, they mentioned something about executive sessions. They've added some additional topics that can be discussed in executive sessions.
I, I have not reviewed that, but I remember one of my AIM reports that mentioned that. I cannot tell you what the categories were going to be, but there, I, I'm aware that there's a discussion about expanding the list of items that can be discussed in executive session. I would note, for anybody here in the public that's watching, just because we can do something in executive session doesn't mean that we will.
I agree.
Kind of gives the transparency power away, you know, showing.
But one topic that I've wanted to discuss, and I, I don't know whether it's proper in executive session or whether you can do it in public session, is about security. Security at, like these meetings.
Yeah.
Security issues.
Yeah.
If that's an appropriate topic to talk about in an executive session, I know we can't make any decisions.
Ultimately, yeah, nothing that we discuss in an executive session can we take action on.
Right.
We have to take action in a public, public meeting.
Right.
I'd have to review the, the act to see what they've updated it with. It would make sense for security issues to be one that was added. Of course, I, one of those folks that thinks it makes sense for some things to be taken out of executive session that are currently there, but, yeah, I can, I can take a look at that, though, and comment on it later.
There were also some changes, and this may make more sense to you, Connie, than it did to me, but they made some changes on, on bonds and when you can approve debt. Like, there has to be a, a cooling off period.
Okay, the one, the one that AIM put on that Brian and I listened to, I know they did, at that time, they didn't talk about anything on bonds or anything. They were still going through all of those bills and that. They just kind of hit the, a lot of the bigger topics at that time, and I've not heard anything on that.
Okay.
They didn't say anything about.
Bonds or anything.
Cooling off period on bonds.
Also, on the, on the local option income tax, if I understood them correctly, that requires an annual adoption of that tax. So if you, you can't just adopt it and assume that it's going to be in place.
You're, you're in essence going to have to renew it every year.
Yes. Okay, I'll, I'll wrap it up. There's a lot more, but.
Partners in pride.
Talcity Strong.
Our partners in pride. Your partners in pride.
No, no, I'm not wrapping my report, I'm just wrapping up this part of it. Sorry, Mayor.
Still got time.
You know, hurry.
We've got all night, Larry.
No, I just thought you were confused. I had the wrong report, too, but I'm going to have to cut it short now.
I'm already going to pay. I'm already going to pay. I attended a, on May the 21st, a presentation at the Talcity Library, given by Katie Papano and Scenic, look at this right, Scenic Lincoln Way, her efforts to have a flatboat constructed. It is currently under construction, for those of you that don't know that. This is a project that Katie's been involved with initially, including Perry and Spencer County. Spencer County has subsequently withdrawn from it, so it is strictly a Perry County project. She is having a flatboat constructed that should, it is probably 50% complete now. She shared pictures of it at that presentation. And the intent is to celebrate Abraham Lincoln's 200th anniversary, which will be in 2028, of his flatboat trip from Rockport to New Orleans. Before that, and initially Spencer County was going to do that reenactment from Rockport to New Orleans, but they subsequently decided they, they can't. They don't have enough volunteers that they can do it. So I think that part of the plan is still being reviewed, but the flatboat will be here. And Katie has arranged for it to be docked at the, at Rocky Point. Her plan is to conduct flatboat tours primarily between Rocky Point and Derby area. And the boat will be able to accommodate 10 passengers, and then there's a captain and Katie. So it'll be a total of 12 people on each trip. So she'll be offering flatboat tours. She's still in the process, Scenic Lincoln Way is a 501(c)(3), and she's still in the process of raising the money. Katie has taken a personal interest in this and has put up a lot of her personal money. I'm not going to get into specifics. If you want to ask me afterwards, I'd be happy to share that information with you. If anybody wants to make a contribution, I have contribution envelopes, and I'm sure she would appreciate any contribution. On May the 22nd, I attended the meeting of the Perry County Development Corporation, as well as Mayor Cale was there, take one of those and pass it down to Mike. I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into a lot of, thank you, a lot of the topics as I normally do, but the one thing I wanted to share with you is this handout that's coming around that talks about local economic development organizations versus consultants. And I think you are all aware that Perry County this year did not renew their contract with Perry County Development Corporation and chose instead to contract with the private for-profit company based in Indianapolis. This particular document, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, for sake of time, saving time, but this particular document I passed out was put together by the Indiana Economic Development Association. I will read their bottom line, which I think is important. Local EDOs, economic development organizations, don't just understand the community, they are the community. They turn strategy into impact with accountability, efficiency, and long-term commitment. Supporting them isn't just smart economic development, it's smart governance. And I would encourage you to study this, and I hope we can continue to support the Perry County Development Corporation, because they're doing whale of a job in promoting Perry County. May the 30th, as Mayor mentioned, there was a retirement ceremony for Janet Dammun. I attended that, recognizing her half-century of service to Talcity, over half-century. And it was, I told Janet, when I talked to her that day, I said that, and I meant this, she reminds me of Talcity. When I see Janet Dammun, I think of Talcity. I mean, she's been involved with this community for a long, long time. And thank you, Mayor, for having that ceremony, I thought it was.
Well, she told me she didn't want to plan anything, so I let the girls down there plan something. So I, I didn't plan anything, right? I lived up to it.
It was nice, I think, I'm sure she appreciated it, and her family appreciated it.
It was different today, I went down there and it was just, it was different, you know?
It was, it was.
Kind of quiet and different, but not in a bad, it's just sad, you know? I miss her.
Well, everybody has to make that decision eventually. Hopefully, they get to make that decision, some people don't get to make that decision. So, anyway. I heard the discussion earlier about the sports complex, and last week I had the opportunity and pleasure of spending two nights down there watching three different ballgames of my great-grandchildren playing at the new sports complex. And fabulous, it's a fabulous asset for this community, long overdue. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and vision on that project. I questioned it a lot during the preparation of it, but that, that, just seeing the kids and the family, the comments I've had shared with me, all of them have been positive, I mean, there, there are some small things that, which you reported that still needed to be done, but it's a, it's a great facility, though, and I, I hope our community takes care of it. I really do.
We will, and uses it.
And uses it, yeah, yeah. Well, even, even while three of the fields, there were games going on in all four fields one night when I was down there, when I got to watch two games the same night. The second game, though, that one of the fields was vacant, but there were some kids out there that started a pickup game. I mean, just a handful of kids out there, and I thought, that's great, I mean, it's nice that they've got a place to do that.
That's what parks are for.
Yeah, sure.
This is not only good for the kids, it's good for families, you know, accessibility of the old one, if somebody was in a wheelchair or had a stroller or a walker or any of those things.
Yeah.
It was a challenge for them, and this makes it accessible for, for all to go down there, even the bathrooms are that way, you know?
Yeah.
And I think that's important.
It is, it is. Finally, I'll conclude with, and I hear a right thing saying thank you, so. My Partner in Pride family for the month of June is Sean and Michelle Zelli, excuse me, at five twenty-eight Sixteenth Street. So, that concludes my report, thank you.
And I also want to say, you know, you said it was something that I worked on, I couldn't have done it without Steve Parker and his team and Arnold and every, we all had a seat at the table and made this happen, even his council did. So, I'm gonna thank you guys for your role in it, too, and support, 'cause it's something that we're all gonna be proud of, it's gonna get used, and I don't mind spending money on something as long as it's gonna get used, you know, that, and that's, you can trust those dollars to invest in this community, and that's what we did. Invested it, so the payback should, should be pretty good, I think, so. Mike, I'm sorry, I'll let you go ahead.
That's all right. Living on Seventeenth Street gives me a bird's eye view of what Ron and Larry are, we're talking about, the awesomeness of this sports complex that allows thousands this summer of kids recreate. Their parents comfortably encouraging them, it's, it's just a, I mean, amazing place. And also, the pool is open, our beautiful pool renovated, so that's another opportunity for kids to recreate, supervised safely. I, I wanted to respond also to Ron's statement, now that I've had a chance to think about it. I, like most officials, rely on our qualified employees who specifically deal with the problems that, in this case, potholes refer to. Have I seen every pothole? No. Have I heard of the potholes? Definitely. Do I have a qualified person to refer to? Definitely. Others as well. So, no, I haven't seen the three that I know of, I might have accidentally done it, but I didn't specifically go to those three and, and see how terrible they were. Hopefully, that satisfies you. No? Okay.
Not one hundred percent, but thank you.
Honesty, yeah, that's good.
And my partner in pride is Joyce and Tom Schaefer at six thirty-two Main Street. It's another house that, as you come into Telside from Troy, this is on the left, on the even-numbered sides, beautifully coiffed yard, they, Tom told me that he wished I could have seen it when the flowers were a-bloom, but it was beautiful even without it, and they deserve it. It's, I'm, I'm encouraged by the number of homes in, in Ward Four that they're, they're just improving the looks of their building, well, in the city, in the whole city, it's amazing how many people are really working at it to beautify the city. Also, I noticed that the yard, lemon, limb and yard waste policies. I don't know if citizens realize that there's a, the city provides a location for you to individually pick up your own debris and drop it off down there, it's free, it's right down by the city building. I have a pickup truck, so I've been able to pick up my neighbors when, when we have a storm, there's a lot of old trees in my neighborhood, and debris falls off just about every time. But I, I use that drop-off spot, it's, it's perfect. I hope everybody realizes it and doesn't realize that they have to wait on the city to do it, it's something that, if they're physically able, if they have a truck, they can do it themselves easily. And that's it.
Can you give me the address again, your Partner in Pride, your address, please?
Six thirty-two Main, it's thirty-seven, sixty-six.
Is it sixteen thirty? Is it sixteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, six thirty-two, right, six thirty-two.
Okay, 'cause they, they live across the alley from me, so.
Six thirty-two.
Okay.
Sixteen thirty.
Sixteen thirty-two, yeah.
Six thirty-two.
Sixteen thirty-two.
No, six.
Six hundred block, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, you forgot your one in there.
Yeah.
We, I knew what you.
Did you teach math at school?
No, I didn't.
Language arts.
Language arts.
What's wrong with me?
He was a good teacher, Mike.
He was, he was my teacher.
Just wasn't real good in math.
That's from a couple youngsters, that was like five or six years ago.
All right, Brian Steen.
Okay, as we talked, kind of talked about before the meeting started, I gave Dodi a list of the first aid class, classes for the city employees, and now Chief Lenny is gonna get together with his instructors and figure out when we can have, all of them have the class. I think I've got, I think there's seven, five or seven classes, five to seven classes, I'm not sure how many I had. But that, we get that started, and then I'm working right now on the different departments trying to get it more zeroed in on what they do a day for their safety, instead of, you know, what we're getting as far as generic stuff, so. And other than that, we had a little deal on Jefferson Street about some backed-up water, but Jim and Chris took care of that. It was, where was it, grass clippings, Jim? Grass clippings that were backing it up, so.
Is that washed, is that, believe it or not, that stuff, once it gets wet and washed, it's, it's almost like, it's not like concrete, but it gets pretty, it creates a pretty tough.
They cleaned it out, but it just kept getting full again, they didn't know if it was underground or what, but I'm glad you guys checked it. And then my Partners in Pride for June is Lloyd and Jenny Sable House at eleven fifteen Thirty-third Street, Connie.
Okay.
That's my old neighborhood.
Your old neighborhood. That's it, that's all I got.
Just for reference, you know, as Brian's talking about the safety part, I asked Brian and to help spear a safety program for all of our employees, you know, even inside City Hall, down to the wastewater, to the street, the police, not so much the police, 'cause Derek kinda knows that, but still, the majority of it all, and Brian has been working on this for quite some time, and we're really excited to implement this 'cause it's, it's not gonna hurt us, these sessions, like IPAP, are free, they don't cost us anything, it's not gonna save us, and Brian's put a lot of effort into it, so.
We talked about having the supervisors be the ones, the department heads be the one to teach it.
Yeah.
And, but I would like to do is get all of the, the department heads together, and I will teach them.
Yeah.
What your, what your stuff's gonna be on your curriculum of it, so, I think that'd be the way to go, that way you guys can do that, so.
They're getting employees, you know, CPR, all employees, CPR certified.
Set up for you guys.
Oh, I'm talking even City Hall, you never know, it, we may be at Walmart, not even at work, and something happened to someone, where we could save a life. I mean, it's a benefit to, to our residents, and us even, so thank you for, go ahead and help them with that.
Good to have.
Eleven fifteen. What was your Partners in Pride address?
Eleven fifteen.
That's a Ward Two?
Thirty-third.
Thirty-third Street.
Behind the armory?
Well, it's before you hit the armory there.
Okay.
What do you think that's different?
That's nine hundred block.
I grew up on, I grew up on the eight hundred block, which is two blocks south of the.
I was thinking that was still in my.
That's okay, I mean, you picked one, I don't care, I'm just saying.
Hey, they're winning.
Thank you, Brian, for.
Taking the heat off of him.
Anytime, Mike.
Me, don't you come over my ward.
You go that one.
I go that.
I gotta work the hotel, man.
Gerald, Gerald's got him at our ward, so, Gerald, your report, I'm sorry. That's not the house you picked, is it, too?
No.
But just wait, just wait till he tells you who you picked.
You didn't steal mine, did you?
No, I had my sign up for yesterday, Tom's Car Wars on sixty-sixth Street.
What's who I?
Oh, yeah.
You're, Gerald, you stole mine.
Well, I have one that I, I have a suggestion for you.
Okay.
When it gets your turn.
Wait, I'll try soon, I better have it back.
I talked to that gentleman yesterday, he was really thrilled to get that.
Yeah.
And.
Well, the nine ninety-nine special.
He's been very, very successful there, what he told me.
Well, good.
I mean, he's done a lot of car washes.
Sure.
And he keeping it clean, so I went through there and, and picked that one. But the one that you could use, I think would be great if you put a sign down to do sports complex.
I was gonna suggest that, too.
It's a good idea.
If I'd known you'd had that one, I'd have picked the sports complex.
Well, I feel like I'm bragging on myself or bragging on us, you know, by picking our own stuff.
I mean, that'd be good, a sign there would be good.
It would be.
For people coming in.
Because, you know, this is just, this is our Partners in Pride, if you really break it down, because there's a lot of, not just city dollars, there's other people have donated this, an investment for that pride in this community, so, okay. Still, Tom's Car Wars. Connie knew that, she must have.
I just looked over there and just seen it just now.
She told you Mike, you could steal it.
No, I put that sign out there yesterday.
Did you, I haven't been that way, so.
So.
Did you have anything else to?
Do what?
Do you have anything else to report for your ward?
Well, for Ron back there, some of these alleys got turned in that I turned in, so I do drive my roads and alleys.
It's more than just the alleys, you know, there's other subjects, the alley is the.
I drive, I mean, I got the whole town, I've, I've been the council one for a long time, and I, a lot of the streets I turn in gets on the list. A lot of them, everybody's ward, not just where I used to be at three, but drive your streets and your alleys, and if you've got a problem, write it down. You got a street that needs to be paved, tell Janice. And then I think Jim and Janice and the mayor can drive and decide.
Perfect example, though, there was two wrong addresses, correct? I mean, there's two people, there was two different wrong addresses, questionable. Okay, so if you write down an alley, what I'm saying is everybody should make sure that you got the proper alley.
Yeah, somebody should go see it.
Well, we, we had Jim, Jim, our street commissioner drove those and got, took his time to get the quotes and sent all that out.
That's how it get, well, the street commissioner drives our streets more than anybody else, but, but that's how it gets to him, if, that's how the complaint.
But that's okay to ask, that's okay. That's all I got.
Okay. Any comments or statements from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
I was gonna, I was, I know I don't get a Partner in Pride, but I was gonna make that same suggestion for the mayor to.
See, I saved that for you, you could have that.
You did, thank you.
Stole my thunder, there you go, I was gonna suggest that the, the mayor put a Partners in Pride at the sports complex, 'cause whole, whole community ought to be proud of it, and that's the last I'm gonna bang the drum on that.
Okay, Connie?
I have no report this evening.
No report, okay. Uh, my report, my Partners in Pride is the sports complex.
There you go.
So, I was making it official. I'll have to get with you before I lose my thunder next month. There's actually a couple more that I could have, that I've got under, but I wanna wait till they're currently renovating a property, I'm gonna let them get a little further along before I do it, because, you know, they wanna be able, I'm gonna show it off, or them to show it off with the sign when they get done, so.
Yeah.
I'll give them some time, so. Real quick, under my report, I do, I do wanna ask the council to do me a favor, and do us all a favor, actually. It would, it would help building and zoning, it would, it would in essence help the street department, too. Drive your wards, if you don't mind, I know I've asked this in the past, and, and most have done it, but make a list of ten properties in your ward, a minimum of ten, if you wanna do twenty or thirty or a hundred, okay, your choice, but if you could do at least ten that could use cleanup, you know, if they have a sofa on their porch, or a mattress, or, or just some junk rubbish in their yard. Write down their address, if you can drop it off in the building and zoning, we would like to reach out to those partners, say, hey, heavy trash pickup, whatever you wanna call it, is, is coming up soon, if you, it'd be wise to discard that now than later. You know, it gives them that opportunity to, to get rid of it without being a lot of much of a burden to either know they can't haul it somewhere, which in some situations that might be the case, and it also can help clean up the neighborhood, but it also helps building and zoning, but you also are driving your ward checking it, and I'm sure most of you will do that anyway, so. If you could just do that within the next week, so we can get letters out in contact with them, so they can bring those items to the alley, 'cause if it stays there, Steve's gotta go through further, further process of cleanup, then the street department has to go there and actually pick it up again, and, or do it, then it just kinda furthers, just delays a cleanup that might in essence be available in the near future anyways. I'd rather get it while the container's here to put it in now than a month from now, so if you don't mind, I would appreciate it.
Something we deem to be trash.
But you, and we're not just gonna send them a letter randomly, we'll, you write down the addresses, Steve will go verify what you, what you see, and then go from there, you know?
So, rusty toy is out the front yard, wooden cowl or wood cowl?
Just use your judgment, what you think, and then Steve can see if there's any violations on that, but I mean, mainly, what I look for a lot is obviously, you know, junk and rubbish, but indoor furniture outside, you know, mattresses, sofas, those seems to be
Most I catch.
The kind of things that people, for some reason, and I get it, some people do not have means to dispose of these, they don't have a truck, or don't know where to take it, I understand that, and this is us trying to help.
Or can't, can't get it from the backyard to the front, or?
Yeah, yeah, so it's us.
We have to have it out on the street, right?
Well, the alley or street, wherever your, your trash is picked up is where you need to have it placed.
Okay.
And, you know, it, it'll only help things if we do this, it won't hurt things, that's for sure, don't clean up the community more, so. That's all I have under my report, so we'll move on now, down to, we'll just jump right down to new business. First item is the tax abatements for compliance statements of benefits, we've done this in the past, you guys remember doing this? Yeah, this is your second go around with this, so.
These are all renewals.
The renewals, basically, when someone fails for a tax abatement, they, they promise or commit to certain things, you know, increasing their employment and da-da-da-da-da and so forth. We're just verifying that they have, they're holding up to their end of the deal, and if they're not, we can deny it. We, I remember before, we have denied, Parker Hennifin was one of them, I don't, none of you were on, well, Jeff, when you were here, but none of you, when I was on council, they asked for abatement on a machine that was several million dollars, they didn't increase employment like they promised, and we denied their, actually, they decreased, it was less than what they had when they applied, so we, we denied their application.
Their renewal.
Or the renewal.
Yeah.
And they could have applied again later, but they didn't, but that's just, it's not that hard for them to fill out this one form for what they're getting and do what they say they were gonna do. So, Connie, I'm gonna let you go with these first, you're kind of the.
The first one that I have here is the Riverpoint Retail LLC, and this is their eighth year of a ten-year abatement, and this is only on the retail space on the first floor of Riverpoint, and currently, that is. And currently, that is what they are leasing and have been leasing recently to Bliss Ice Cream.
Question, a couple of questions. For what year does this abatement apply?
2026, for next year's taxes.
Okay. It's my understanding that Bliss Artisan has moved all their operations out of that building.
Okay. Was it there January 1 of this year?
That I don't know.
Okay, 'cause this would.
Think it was January 1.
I think this would, because this is 25, pay 26, so it's whatever was there January 1 of 25.
Okay.
And then they'll pay that in 26.
And that's the only retail business that's in that.
As far as I know, that's the only retail business in there, and that's the only one that's filed on.
Connie, is there such thing that we can table that one, and, or does it have to be a tonight thing?
Uh, no, because I do not have to have this to the, this list to the county auditor until the middle of July.
Okay, so that one might, we might look at table on that one, because if they have, if their abatement's on a business that's there that's not there.
I think they were, but I don't know for sure.
I know.
I think they were two, but let's verify that.
Okay.
I think if, I mean, if it's not, if there's no timeline that we have to, you know, get it tonight, it's not gonna hurt anything.
Correct.
Then we'll know what we're voting on for sure. So that's.
The rest of that.
It's all rental.
The rest of that first place has been converted to rental property.
That's correct, residential rental.
Residential rental.
Yeah, so.
So this could be the last year for it next year, and it could be that it, you won't allow it for next year, so. Okay, so I will see what kind of information I can find out on that.
There you go. Too late now.
Exactly.
Okay, so we'll, do we, just wanna go through these one at a time and vote on them?
Yes, that's the best way.
Is there a motion to table the first one, the River Point Retail, until we get clarification as far as, was that space leased January 1st?
Motion to table.
Motion by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, thank you, Connie.
Okay, the next one on your list is HBS LLC. This is the second year of a 10-year abatement, so this is the second year, so the abatement amount will be 90% of the assessed value. This is the Apartments.
Furniture Row Apartments.
Furniture, thank you, I couldn't think of the name of them, Furniture Row Apartments on 7th Street.
What does it say, how many employees he has for that?
He is saying that he, if you look at the one from this, that's File Mark 2025, he's got two employees, is what he's saying. And if you, I think if you look at his, when he originally filed it.
Said he was gonna have two.
He said he was gonna have two.
It's harder to read, it's that back.
Well, he wrote, it's, it's hard to copy, it's very bad on my original, too.
Oh, okay.
So.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the HBS LLC by Larry and a second by Gerald. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and the next one we have is Listen Up LLC. This is the first year of a 10-year abatement, and I did contact the county assessor's office today to get what their new assessment is going to be. And right now, they're telling me that new assessment is $115,800. So they would, that's on the improvement only, and they would get, first year would be 100% abated. And then it'll go down by 10% each year after that.
Did you say 115,000?
Eight, yes, 115,800.
On the improvement.
On the improvement, correct. Now, and that, they are still reviewing things in the assessor's office until July 1, so I will have to contact them again to make sure what that assessment is as of July 1.
Okay. Any questions on Listen Up LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry, second by Brian, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all, and I will get some information on River.
Is there some of them that didn't turn any in?
No, this is all, well, the only other one that the council has approved that we have not had an improvement on yet is the property where the hotel is supposed to, the hotel filed one.
Okay, the poorhouses, is it expired?
Theirs is expired, and so has John Shears. Both of those have expired. So these are the only current ones that we have.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
I noticed, I noticed that it's not included in our packet, but in the packet that was emailed to us, that Listen Up LLC provided an explanation as to why they missed their targets, and I, for one, appreciated that explanation.
Yeah, I noticed he had that with it, yes.
I didn't see that in the packet, though.
It is on the backside of one of the papers.
Okay, supplemental information, yeah, okay.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, thank you, Connie.
All right, that concludes the item A, the tax payments, and moving to item B. It's an ordinance establishing limb and yard waste policies. Now, council, we're not adopting this ordinance tonight, let's just throw that out there. This is merely for, to read, discuss, the do's, the don'ts, the likes, the wanna change, whatever you wanna do. That's what this is, and that's why Jim's here. You know, he's run into some problems down at the limb stack, there's a big problem down there. I mean, I don't say daily, but close to it off and on, you know, where you've got residents that don't live in the city, bringing their limbs to the limb stack, and that is not for county residents. If you live outside of Tel City, if you live in Cannleton, sorry, if you live out anywhere outside the corp limit, that is not for you. And then, commercial dumping there, as far as, like, I own a tree removal business, and our landscape business, you know, we don't pay, they're not, they can't bring that down there and dump it, because some of these, if I cut down four trees in someone's yard, and I'm getting paid to remove them, and I take them down there, can you imagine the city out and haul four trees down there then, again? It could get pretty expensive. And then that's less time our employees have to maintain Windy Creek, and maintain the riverfront, and mow these yards that grass is too tall, because, you know, they haven't mowed it, and so forth.
But what if I have a tree cut down, and I tell them to just cut it down, leave it, I'm gonna cut it up and haul it down to the waste yard?
You're the one removing the tree, so I would think you could probably do that.
Not according to this ordinance.
Well, that's why it's, this is for the discussion part of it.
If we adopt it, because you're gonna have limbs larger than four inches in diameter.
Well, this is all for discussion tonight, so this is, that's why we're not adopting anything tonight. This is merely.